Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michael Dever. I am the Chair of the County Planning Commission, and I'm going to call this meeting to order for Thursday, November 18th at 2:00 P.M. Annette, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Boebst. Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Serene.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
Director Collier. Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Disico. Mayor Gamala. Mayor Prosek.
Here.
Mayor Sellers. Mr. Doyle.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comment for this meeting may be submitted in writing no later than 1:00 P.M. on Thursday, the 18th via email to the following address: planning@kiahaw county.us. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for October 14, 2021. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes, Mayor Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor Brennan. Second?
Second.
Second from Mayor Byrne. Is there any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who go against, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Middleburg Heights Master Plan update.
Mary.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Rachel Novak on our team. She is one of our senior planners and the project manager for the Middleburg Heights Master Plan. We wanted to provide this update, as you'll see, is because we have a resolution related to this project and thought it would be helpful to hear an update on this project and then talk about next steps. So, turn it over to Rachel. Thank you.
All right. I think we're good. All right. Well, thank you for allowing me to be here today with all of you to kind of share an update on the Middleburg Heights Master Plan. As Mary said, my name is Rachel Novak. I'm a senior planner with the Planning Commission. Would it be better if I took my mask off? Okay. So, as Mary said, I'm a senior planner with the Planning Commission. I've actually been here for, going on, five years. So, I feel like time has really flown by, hasn't it, Mary? I think even in your time here, it just flies right on by. Wait for Kevin to pull up the presentation. Oh, no problem. The Middleburg Heights certainly is quite a robust community in such a dynamic region, you know, within the county. So, the project officially kicked off, actually, November of 2019, you know, not really knowing what 2020 had in store for us. We certainly had to be extremely proactive and flexible in terms of the process and really how we were going to move forward, engaging with the project team, engaging with stakeholders, and engaging with the public ultimately. So, you know, with us here on staff, Kevin was certainly a huge asset with keeping our website up to date, providing draft documents online for folks to view and download. And then also, the city went through a rebranding as well, fresh look to their website, and they kept their website up to date. We also did a number of social media blasts to really get the word out about any engagement opportunities to the public. The city also did a number of e-newsletters, again, helping us advertise those community engagement periods. And you can see there in the graphic, Mayor Castelli actually did a really great job and the city developed these really high-quality videos that talked about the project and shared it to everyone within the community to really get their engagement as those community engagement periods opened up, to let them know where they can find the surveys and share their thoughts and ideas kind of throughout the process. So, we have up to date done two community engagement periods, one, each of them running for about a month long. Traditionally, we might have only kept them open for about two weeks. Had it not been the pandemic, we extended those engagement periods to make sure folks had ample time to really share their thoughts. So, our first community engagement period, we had about 595 respondents, and then our second one, we had about 358 respondents and thousands and thousands of written comments that we really went through to understand, making sure we were hearing what the public was saying. So, again, where we've been, you know, we've gone through those first three phases. And for folks that might not be familiar with our master plan approach, our first phase is current conditions. This is where we really do our homework on the community, where we try and understand the city on a deeper level. We've also gone through our community vision, so this is where we outline that vision for the future, to really understand kind of what residents want and need. And then our third phase, goals and actions, this is where, you know, kind of the meat of the plan resides. These are where our recommendations fall. And some of those big ideas, you know, that we've developed throughout the process, one of them being Central Park. So, this location is a focus area that we identified, you know, hearing from residents, stakeholders, and the project team. This is located just east of the I-71 Bagley Road interchange area. So, there's a really great opportunity here for collaboration with the Cleveland Metro Parks, expanding some recreation opportunities. The Civic Campus is just to the north there. So, this is a really great opportunity, and the city is already moving forward with a number of the recommendations that we've identified for this area. Another place, and probably the number one most important area identified as part of the master plan, was Southland and kind of the greater Southland area. So, the city already undertook a number of studies of this area partnering with city architecture to identify, you know, some potential development scenarios, you know, everything that, you know, really trying to increase that walkability in the area. So, the city, again, is already undertaking steps to implement pieces of the master plan, and they're doing some different transportation studies, looking at not only the Southland site, but the roads and areas around it to really try and carry those improvements over from the Southland area and understand how we can integrate more multimodal connectivity. And thirdly, looking at kind of the future land use map, the number one kind of key land use consideration that kind of came from this particular set of recommendations was understanding and focusing on mixed use target zones. So, you can see those in the dark purple on the map. These are areas identified not only as focus areas, but great opportunities for kind of that live-work-play environment that residents really desire. They want places for outdoor dining, outdoor entertainment, and really kind of good areas that we can make those placemaking elements into the development and make Middleburg Heights, you know, a very special place in those areas. Where we are, we're currently in the fourth phase of the master plan. So, this is implementation. This is where we're starting to organize the community's priorities and projects and identifying potential partners and outlining funding opportunities to really start to get some of these projects on the ground and get some traction going there. There'll be one more community engagement period associated with this particular phase. And so, we're working with the city to develop one more e-newsletter to blast out to folks in early 2022 to get their feedback. So, once that's done, we think about each of those phases as a separate chapter of the master plan. We'll go through and combine all of them into a comprehensive document, and we anticipate presenting that to City Council for adoption in early 2022. Did it skip some slides, Kevin? But with all of our projects, we do have a project website that is dedicated just to the Middleburg Heights Master Plan. So, you can find that at countyplanning.us/middleburghighs, where folks can download documents and different things throughout the project. But that's really it in terms of my update about the Middleburg Heights Master Plan. So, there's a lot of really great work that is already starting to come out of the master plan. The Middleburg Heights has been an absolutely tremendous partner to work with throughout the process. So, again, thank you for allowing me to provide the update. I'm available for any questions or comments about the Middleburg Heights Master Plan.
Thank you, Rachel. I know you see a lot of the work that we're doing on, you know, a list of projects. I just think it's important for you not only to see our staff and the work that we're doing and just give you a brief update. But if we go to the next one, part of why I wanted to make sure we included this update is because we now have a resolution in front of you that we're seeking approval to enter into a contract with Middleburg Heights for additional work, and Jim will talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Mary. And I have one slide, so hold fast. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. If you could turn to page seven of your board packet, that contains all the details on this resolution. You've heard from Rachel the great story about the status of our work with the city and the progress we've made. It really speaks volumes to the relationship we've developed, and we've really become strong partners, we feel, with the city, as well as its team of consultants. So, you know, throughout the course of this master plan, the city's brought us to the table to talk about their other ongoing projects. Rachel mentioned the Southland Shopping Center redevelopment with city architecture and J. Stewart Land Use for their zoning code update. So, with their code update being nearly complete, the city, of course, asked us to do two things. One, Rachel spoke to draft the future land use map so that it reflects their desired zoning code updates. And secondly, to prepare a zoning map update to go with the code, once it's adopted, and be adopted at the same time. So, the first request, that was already within our scope of work, so we said, yeah, that makes all the sense in the world. The second, we said, we'll give you a proposal that the city accepted. So, you'll see from the scope, we've divided this into three major tasks. We're going to take the work that J. Stewart's developed and identify those needed zoning map updates, whether it's by parcel, whether it's by district, and even just listing, you know, the ordinances whereby all these changes have been adopted. We can bring that into the map. Secondly, we'll prepare that updated zoning map and we'll deliver it to the city electronically and in paper if needed. And thirdly, this is what really makes it usable to a wider audience. We're going to post it online. The city will embed it on their city website, so it's available to not just city staff, but all users, potential users, the development community, anyone who needs to get into the code to get a project started and finished. So, we do anticipate numerous meetings with city staff and its consultants, the city planning commission, of course, and city council. We'll establish a project team with the city, set up interviews with users, just, we want to know who the audience is so that we can make sure that this is just the perfect deliverable for them. Our total fee is not to exceed $7,000, and with your approval, we can begin this work on December 1st and complete it with June 30th to coincide with the adoption of their zoning code update, the master plan update, so it's all one complete package. And happy to take any questions.
Okay. So, I had a question, actually. It might be both for the zoning and the master plan. I'm just wondering, when you engage with the city on these things, is there any instruction to the city on sort of a periodic update process that they might undergo in between contracting with the county planning to do the large job?
We learn a lot about the cities we work with, you know, through every step of the master plan process. So, we do get familiar with how they operate administratively. And with this city, you know, they are willing to, you know, they've been very active participants, very engaged with us. So, when they see a need for more from us, they ask. And if it's within the scope, we just work it in. And if it's not in the scope, they're not shy about asking us for a proposal. I'm not shy about offering a proposal. So, this is how, you know, we can really keep a planning effort alive and viable and workable for the city and everyone who participates in this effort, and also just keeps them up to date and moving so that, you know, once we deliver a master plan, they're geared up for implementation immediately. City of Middleburg Heights, I think, is already well-engaged in implementation on a number of fronts. So, you know, we're happy to be there with them every step of the way and offer any assistance we can. Yep.
I could just follow up on that quickly. I think this was a really nice example of, a lot of times, you do a master plan, it has a list of recommendations. Usually, those would include zoning code update and a zoning map update. Middleburg Heights was actually doing this along the way, so they were actually working on their zoning code update while we were doing the master plan. We're working with their consultants to now make sure the master plan recommendations fall within the recommendations for the zoning code update, and then they've asked us to do the actual zoning map update. So, typically, it doesn't happen that fast and happening along parallel routes, but it's been a great opportunity for everybody to collaborate on the effort.
Thanks. Thank you, Mary. Thanks, Jim. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 211118-A. Do I have a second?
Second, Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor Byrne. Any further comment or discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Just a voice vote is adequate, is that right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to the executive director, Mary.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this brief. I know everyone is extremely busy, but just want to hit a few highlights on a few projects, as well as outlook for 2022, I still have trouble saying it, as well as staff and capacity updates, personnel review committee, and then our December board meeting. So, I wanted to take an opportunity to show, again, we did this back in June, took a look at the projects that we're currently working on, just to give you a snapshot of what's happening in our office. We obviously have a lot of work going on. We are very busy, a lot of opportunity for some of these projects to be finished by the end of this year or looking into spring next year. And so, as we're doing that, we're thinking already on what we need to be working on next year. And so, this is just a sampling of the projects that we're working on, as well as the percent complete that we are at this point. You know, as we look at this list, we think of, you know, one-line items, but I can say for the Lakefront Public Access Plan, that is a project that is taking a lot of effort. It's a great project. We are working collaboratively with a lot of partners, and we are seeking funding. So, we're doing grant writing and assistance there. So, some of these, obviously, are a little bit less time-consuming and others are more, but we're loving to see the advancement of these projects. And so, working with Department of Development, we've had some great conversations with them on the work that they've asked us to do for them, engaging East Cleveland on that work, working with Team Neo on the site identification. So, again, that was one of my goals coming into this role, is to really collaborate with other organizations, because I feel there's no reason for us to be acting, you know, in a silo. And so, it's been really rewarding to be having those conversations and have support from outside entities in the work that we're doing. So, if you took the next slide, just taking a look at future projects, these are some of the things that, if you remember back, when we talked about not doing the planning grants for 2021, we really wanted to make sure that the work that we were doing, we're going to have a benefit to many, even if we weren't contracting with individual communities. An example of that is the second phase of the single-family zoning. Patrick's worked very hard, leading that effort with the First Suburbs Consortium on Phase 1. They're working diligently now to come up with the scope for Phase 2, so that will be coming to you likely in January for seeking approval for an additional contract there. And so, the work that we do on those kind of projects, I mean, it's taking information from 19 communities and really putting it into this plan. And an exciting piece that we're looking to work on in next year also is transitory and development. We've had several good conversations with RTA. Patrick's going to do a slide introduction of that, and we'll be bringing that to you in the new year as well in more formal fashion. We really feel like this is something that Planning Commission can do in kind and in partnership with RTA, because I think it will have a benefit for so many communities. So, those are kind of examples that are big-scale project ideas that really focus on county as a whole and the communities within them versus individual contracts. Now, we haven't decided exactly what we're going to do for planning grants. We have a lot of needs for zoning code updates. We don't have a lot of people that can do zoning code updates, so we need to balance the work on what we do, because a lot of those are time-consuming too. But more to come on that. The other thing that is on here is the AeroZone Master Plan. We're working really closely with the AeroZone Alliance. We've had several conversations with them on what it might look like in terms of a role for the Planning Commission in that effort, and we have some guidance that potentially we'll be looking at a current conditions report versus a master plan, because we really think with all the communities that are involved, we need to start somewhere and figure out what we've got and then what, you know, direction we want to go in. So, a lot of great collaboration with that as well. In terms of staff capacity, our current intern, hello, I want to reflect the record that Councilwoman Simon has joined us. Our current intern, Sarah, from University of Cincinnati, her last day will be December 17th, so she has been a tremendous help on many projects that we're working on. So, we'll be sad to see her go, but excited for her future opportunity. And who knows, maybe she'll be back as a future intern. That has happened in the past, which is terrific. We are coordinating with Cleveland State currently, looking for a grad student for an intern for the winter semester. We felt like a grad student would fit better with our work schedule versus an undergrad, and so, we're trying to coordinate a call with Cleveland State to finalize some of that and see what options we have. In addition, I've had some conversations with the Cleveland Foundation about a fellowship, which is a tremendous opportunity for Planning Commission, because it is a paid position by the Cleveland Foundation and is a one-year placement. So, we really could have somebody on our team that was a one-year, working on a project that was being paid out of the Cleveland Foundation versus someone on our salary. So, really excited about those opportunities and want to continue to do more of that. The Personnel Review Committee, I know that we have talked about that in earlier meetings. This is a process that's been going on for a number of years since I started. We've really taken it even that step further in trying to look at finalizing our planning services, job descriptions, and the pay grades associated with that. We tried to do that in the timing that we were doing annual reviews and looking at merit raises. We have a lot of other job descriptions that need to be finalized and pay grades assigned to those to try and level-set things with other county departments, because, again, we're the only ones that have planners and we're the only one who have a lot of the jobs that, you know, other county departments don't. So, we're just trying to get some cohesiveness on those job descriptions and salary grades. So, we will be meeting with them tomorrow to discuss that. For our December board meeting, we are looking to bring forth to you Parma Parking and Transportation Analysis. The City of Parma reached out to us and is looking for assistance to work on some areas that they're having challenges with, with parking, maybe not enough parking, parking on residential streets, trying to figure out what businesses need which kinds of parking allotments. And so, we had mentioned previously that that would be something we'd like to work on as a whole for Kiahaw County, because there are so many communities that face that issue with parking, but they have a more immediate need for it. So, we have confirmed with the city, they are good with the scope that we have put before them. They will be meeting early December, and then we'd like to bring that to you at our December 9th meeting for approval for a contract on that work. Pepper Pike, Mayor Bain reached out to us and is looking for some assistance for a community survey. They've done some surveys in the community related to some of their streets and sidewalks, and they want to go a little step further. So, we are putting together a scope for that. We've done similar work for the City of Orange, and so, looking to see how we can help them to get this survey done, and they would like to bring it before their council, before the end of the year. So, that is coming as well. And Solid Waste Policy Committee, I know Elizabeth will speak more to that, to see if we need, what needs to happen at the December meeting as well. Okay. Old Business, we never used this section before, so I questioned whether or not we should, but I thought it was appropriate, because these are issues that we talked about at our last meeting. Board appointments, in terms of office. In your packet, we showed where there's going to be changes in terms of mayoral elections and retirements. We're very sad to see you go. So, Mayor Gamala and Mayor Byrne will not be with us next year, so those will be appointments made by the county executive. Just today, we were notified that Councilwoman Chantel Brown's seat has been filled, and we're happy to have Councilwoman Yvette Conwell will be joining our board. Her alternate will be Joe Nani. And then, our former alternate for Councilwoman Brown, Khalil, is now mayor-elect for the City of Cleveland Heights, and so, we wish you well on that, but we'll miss all of you next year on our board, so there will be some changes of the seats for that. So, obviously, the City of Cleveland, with Mayor Jackson not running for election, and now Mayor Leib in place, they have a seat, and so, to see, you know, what happens with that one, I know that I've talked with Michelle Pomerantz this week, so she will be working with the county executive to review upcoming term expirations and then appointments. So, our February board meeting, February 10th board meeting is our organizational meeting, so we'll take care of putting those new positions in place. So, we're excited to have Councilwoman Conwell, and I'll be following up with her to get her onboarded and let her know about all the fantastic work being done by this team. And then, the budget hearing update, we did present to the Budget Committee on November 4th. It was a great opportunity for us, I think, for me. It was my first time going through this and really trying to show a little bit about what this team does and who's on our team and the representation of this board. And I know now that the Budget Committee will be bringing forth recommendations, budget amendments on Monday, and so, we'll see what happens with those, and we're hoping we'll, you know, get the support we need to continue on with the staff we've got. So, it was something that I know all the departments went through, and it's a tough task. So, I'm glad it's over. I hope it'll be all good going forward. So, I think that was it for me. For any questions on any of those items, I know I went through pretty quickly. I also wanted just, we're going to use the new business category, which we don't typically do. This is not anything that requires any board action, but as I mentioned earlier about the transitory and development and the work that we're doing, I wanted to have Patrick do a brief introduction on that and talk about some conversations we've had and where we're going from here. So, with that, I'll introduce Patrick. Yes?
Yes, maybe in advance of that, I just wanted to ask if there's any thought, you talked about having a countywide parking study, as opposed. How closely is that work going to be with the transit-oriented development work?
If it's part of it, will parking be part of it?
Communication between those two projects, or I don't know how that's going to work, but I figure they are very closely aligned and could be helpful to each other, so.
Yeah. And we haven't given a ton of thought to the, you know, what the overall parking will be. We've just been really busy, but it's something we know needs to happen. And, you know, Patrick, I don't know if there's something specific with parking, but definitely in conversations that we're doing, it is something, a lot of the best practices with transitory and development do not require a lot of parking. So, looking at codes and looking at what could be updated is definitely an opportunity. Okay, Patrick?
Thank you. I'll take my mask off. We have, just maybe in follow-up to that conversation a little bit, we've talked, Jim and I just mentioned a kind of a Venn diagram of three different prongs of transit-oriented development, a countywide parking analysis, and completing green streets, and working those together to think about how all of those do interact. I'll go through transit-oriented development, and certainly, parking is going to be an important part of the zoning component of that as well. So, thank you for letting me walk through. I'm going to try this fancy new clicker. I'm going to introduce everybody to the Transit-Oriented Development Zoning Study, which is a proposed project between ourselves and RTA. Today, I'm just going to briefly introduce what I mean by transit-oriented development, talk a little bit about local examples of transit-oriented development, previous and current efforts surrounding this, where we see ourselves fitting the needed work in this, and then talk about the actual proposed projects that we have. So, when we talk about transit-oriented development, we're talking about development such as this intro, which is in Ohio City, right next to the West Side Market, which is definitely one of the largest examples of transit-oriented development in the region. But what we're talking about is developments that is in proximity to transit, whether in this case, train, but also frequent bus services. We're talking about a mix of uses, where you have residential and commercial uses. We're talking about higher densities. We're talking about buildings that are close to the street and have limited parking or parking in the right place, such as behind or underground. So, this is a good example of transit-oriented development, and I want to put you in the footsteps of somebody who's stepping off of a bus. You can imagine stepping off the bus on the image to the left, where you have a building that's pretty far set back, versus stepping off the bus to the image at the right, which is going to be really where you're stepping off right into the midst of everything. And there's important components to think about when we're thinking about how we design and shape our cities and our buildings that play into this. The image on the left is an example where there's quite a bit of parking. The building is set back from the street. It's one-story and just single-use. So, again, when you're stepping off the bus, you have to walk through a parking lot. You certainly don't live here just to be able to get to that retail. Versus on the right, we're talking about a place where the parking is in the rear, underground, where there's no setback. You're stepping right off into the middle of the place you want to be, and it's multi-story and mixed-use, so you've got, maybe you're living above and retail on the first floor. So, that's kind of what we're talking about when we're talking about transit-oriented development. And the reason that we want to talk about TOD is what we talk about is go, grow, and green. Go, it lets you take the bus more easily. You're able to hop on the bus and take it where you need to go fairly quickly. Grow, we're talking about denser development and residential development along transit lines and in a built-out community, built-out county. This allows us to add residential. And green, taking transit is a more environmentally friendly manner of getting around. So, there's a lot of positive outcomes about developing in this manner. And we have been developing in this manner in some instances, but not everywhere across the board. On the top, we've got two examples of transit-oriented developments in Cleveland, both Intro and then Harbor 44 at 44th and Lorraine. Harbor 44 is a great example, because it's slightly smaller and it's more approachable, maybe for more suburban communities with just two stories. There's a Sherwin-Williams on the first floor. The other two, Van Aken District and Top of the Hill, are suburban examples of transit-oriented development, much larger ones. But we are seeing these in different places, and people want to see this type of development, but we're not seeing it everywhere. And this is an example that we tend to see throughout the community, throughout the county, of uncoordinated development. This road is a border between two communities, Cleveland Heights and University Heights, and on the left, you see kind of a strip center that's set back behind parking. On the right, you see an example of a transit-oriented development, a more historic example with a three-story building, residential above retail. Often, this type of uncoordinated development happens, because you've got two different zoning codes, and often, when we talk about zoning, it requires what we see on the left, and it doesn't allow what we see on the right. And that's what we're trying to address with this study. And that's what we're trying to address with this study. There has been a ton of work that happened around TOD. RTA in 2007 completed best practices and guidelines for TOD. NOAAAC in 2016 did a regional TOD scorecard and an implementation plan where they talked about land use typologies along major transit lines. RTA in 2021 updated their priority transit corridors and worked with Cleveland also in '21 to do a BRT and zoning plan for the West 25th Street corridor in the City of Cleveland. So what's missing and where do we see ourselves sitting into this? Well, these are the priority transit corridors that RTA has identified, both in Cleveland and in where we're really focusing, a number of suburban communities. And what we see missing are corridor land use strategies, coordinated zoning along the extent of those corridors and across communities, and thinking about an incentive and investment strategy. How can we support development with existing or potentially new dollars, funneling that towards the types of locations where transit is accessible? So we're proposing a transit-oriented development zoning study that has four phases. The first phase is a state of transit-oriented development, where we talk about what TOD is, really building upon a lot of the work that's already been done, and talking about why it's important, and sharing that with our communities. The second phase would be an analysis of TOD zoning to see whether or not current zoning codes allow transit-oriented development along transit lines. The third would be doing a model code that communities could adopt to help attract more development by having the right zoning in place. And the last phase is talking about financing strategies, thinking about incentives and investments that can be made along these corridors, and looking what other regions have done, places like Pittsburgh, Chicago, Seattle, all have regional TOD plans that can act as examples. What we are kind of talking about is similar to what we've done with our First Suburbs Consortium work, the single-family zoning analysis, where we, in this instance, looked at the single-family zones for 19 communities, 55 districts across the First Suburbs. We looked at minimum lot size and found out how big minimum lot sizes are across the First Suburbs, and we compared them to current lots. This map showcases in blue all of the lots that don't conform to the zoning. We want to showcase a very similar project with TOD, where we look at whether or not current zoning allows the type of development that we'd like to see and map that out. We want to start with just this first phase, which is the state of TOD in Cuyahoga County, the why and what we have presently, before we get into the other pieces. We are working with RTA to build a coalition and a working group, and our first task includes developing that TOD guide to define TOD, to confirm corridors, talk about benefits and previous work, as well as identify prime opportunity sites. And we're working to build a website and conduct outreach so that we can talk with communities and with the appropriate folks about how we accomplish this. Just to end, I really thought that this was particularly appropriate when we think about TOD. This is Euclid Avenue from 2007, as the health line was being built. Almost every single building in this picture has been renovated since that was built, and it just goes to show how transit can support development, and development can support transit, and that's why we have such beautiful downtown today. So thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mary, and the board for the time to speak today.
Well, pre-COVID, of course. This, this line was being used. I've heard mixed results about it.
The health line certainly, absolutely, the health line certainly had its ups and downs, especially as we talked about off, off-board fare payment. That slowed down the health line quite a bit. I know RTA is working to up that. I don't have the numbers from pre-pandemic, but I think just recently, they announced that they were back to something like 90% of ridership. Don't quote me on that. We'll have to check, but we're working with them to make sure that the development that we're proposing is supportive of those frequent transit routes.
Right. I heard it was underutilized, even though we had the development happening on Euclid. People still weren't, for some reason, that just wasn't something people wanted to use from university circle to downtown. But we've got to be careful. I mean, that was a lot of money, investment.
I think what we're hoping is that when you bring the development, it supports the transit, because now you have destinations that people want to go to, and you've got the people living along it so that they can use it. So the development's a really important component of that. What we're talking about with this is the development piece, not the transit piece. So that was, of course, a transit project. We're talking more about the development, and it kind of goes hand-in-hand where you can see transit-ready corridors, where we develop more densely, both in terms of jobs and housing, to support the transit, so that when we are ready, we can then put those developments of transit, transit improvements in place, so that they are successful.
Yeah, it's the opposite. I appreciate that.
Yes, Patrick, this may be, this may be beside the point, but I think it also goes along with Councilwoman Simon's point. Has there been any discussion about rerouting the healthcare line to go up Mayfield through the heights and up into Hillcrest? Because the healthcare line, and I've observed from the, from when it was designed, proposed, and implemented, duplicates the red line, rather than providing a different route that would service a different group of riders. And, and there is development there that could be enhanced by, by such a transportation opportunity, and perhaps this is, again, beyond maybe the scope of your presentation, but it, but in, has there been, has, are you aware of any discussion, consideration, any mention of doing any such thing?
Sure. The extension of the health line actually that RTA studied was an extension of the health line into Euclid, so heading through the east side of Cleveland and up into Euclid.
Okay.
I think when we looked at the priority corridors for RTA, they do include Cedar Corridor, Cedar Road Corridor as being important to the future and long-term, long-term priorities. We have some ideas, I think, on our end of where we imagine future high-capacity transit or faster, more frequent transit would be appropriate. We've talked actually about Mayfield and Cedar as good examples. Right now, what RTA is working on is the West 25th Street corridor. They recently completed the 25 connects plan that looks to add bus lanes, higher-density development along 25th in the City of Cleveland. Where they go from here, I think that is probably a better question for RTA, but that map might showcase some examples of the priorities that they've been thinking about.
Very good, though. Glad to hear that. I think both the Cedar and Mayfield corridors are underutilized at this time and could really use some attention, and there's a lot of potential there. So thank you for sharing that.
Absolutely.
So just wondering, what is sort of a rough anticipated start time for Phase 1?
We would anticipate starting Phase 1 very soon, if not by January at the very least. Phase 1 would just be kind of the wide transit-oriented development, probably last about six months, but we would hope to then move very expeditiously into the next phases.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, if not, thanks, appreciate it. Okay, that concludes your comments also.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move to the next item, comments from the public. I don't know if anybody's here to speak on, or did we get any, anything in writing? All right, that sounds great. If there's nothing further to hold our attention, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
In favor, say aye. All right, thank you, we conclude this meeting. I think we'll move right into the next meeting then. Are we all right to roll right in?
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Okay, if we can, I'll call the, the Solid Waste Policy Committee meeting to order. Annette, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Boebst. Mayor Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Serene.
Here.
Mayor Byrne.
Here.
Director Collier. Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor DeSico. Mayor Gemella. Mayor Prosek. Mayor Sellers. Councilwoman Simon.
Here.
Mr. Mathias.
Here.
Okay, thank you, we have a quorum. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to approval of the minutes from the April 8, 2021 Policy Committee meeting.
Second.
And from Councilwoman Simon. Any discussion on the minutes, changes? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Their motion passes. Okay, next in order is district announcements.
Good afternoon, all. Nice to actually be here in person, thank you. So I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, I have just a lot to catch you up on, and a lot of what we've been doing doesn't really have any great visuals that I could present to you today, so I'm just going to run through some things, and we will have some other things to bring back to you in December, and I will address those at the end of the presentation. Just some announcements, we are continuing not only our in-person presentations, but we are still continuing our webinars. You can go to our website to see a list of things that our educational staff is presenting to the general public. In particular, we're focusing on food waste minimization as we roll into the holiday season, and just better purchasing habits to minimize waste reduction also through the holiday season. We are underway with our campaign sign recycling program. That is a perennial favorite, and so if you have any, you know, campaign signs that you would like to have recycled, please bring those to our facility. We have a drop-off in the lobby. We do recycle those materials through North Coast Recycling. We actually do accept those year-round, but we put the push out, obviously, from the beginning of November to the end of the year. So if you have any of those that you would like to have recycled, please bring those on down. We are also kicking off our holiday light recycling program, and this is in conjunction with the zoo. We are actually a drop-off site for the zoo's Christmas or holiday light recycling program, so you can also bring those to our lobby, drop those off if we're a more convenient location than the zoo is. We broker those materials through a local scrap dealer. Believe it or not, all those little lights have copper wires in them and can be stripped and that metal recycled. The funds do go back to the zoo to help support all of their activities, so that is underway. And lastly, our last announcement is we are seeking a replacement for our citizen representative on the policy committee. Mr. DeMuth has stepped down, and we are hoping to bring to you a candidate at the December meeting that, you know, will fill that seat for the next two years. We will also, as, as long as I don't scare Mr. Mathias off this afternoon, hope to reappoint him for another two-year term. So the district add-ons to the policy committee will be whole then. We can take that motion in December, and we'll be good to go by the first of the year, so stay tuned for that in December. Wanted to provide you a variety of updates. We have been very busy. I greatly appreciate coming back to the district and jumping right in with activities and programming. We did submit our annual district report, which is a statutory report that we have to provide the OEPA by June 1st of every year. We did get that submitted on time. We did see the effects of COVID in that report, so this is 2020 data that we submitted in, by June 1st of this year. We actually, Jessica has the dubious honor of surveying residential entities, commercial entities, and industrial entities throughout our district, trying to find out what they recycle, where it goes, what they dispose of, and putting together this huge waste-flow pie and determining by sector than what we recycle. In our current solid waste plan, although under the OEPA new format, we don't have to report industrial recycling percentages any longer. In our existing plan, we chose, because we always have been very good at data collecting, to continue that process. So 2020 did show that unfortunately, garbage generation outpaced recycling efforts, and as you can imagine, that was greatly impacted by a number of businesses that weren't open and folks being at home, ordering materials there for homeschooling and just for general survival. So our reconciled numbers from the OEPA did come out about a month ago, and what the EPA does is each of us districts submit our annual district reports. They do then a statewide reconciliation for cycling and disposal, and so our official numbers for 2020 came out that in the residential sector, we recycled 23.31%. That is down slightly from 2019, which we had 25.19%. So we did see that impact. Again, it wasn't that necessarily recycling dwindled, it was just that folks cleaning out basements and doing home repairs with plenty of time on their hands outpaced their cycling efforts. What we did see on the industrial side, a slight increase also due to, or excuse me, a slight decrease also due to COVID with businesses being closed. We saw in the industrial sector, a recycling rate of 64.59%, and that is down from 76% the year prior. Overall, when you combine those two as a district, we're not doing badly at all, even in the face of a pandemic, we are at 35%. So that is above the state's goal overall, so even in the face of adversity, we have managed to keep up our recycling efforts. I'd like to move on then to our annual report that we send to the communities. We did mail that out in June, and on that report, Jessica takes some of the data that we receive in, that we utilize to compile our annual district report, to report the recycling and reduction activities by community within our district. That was mailed to all of you, and we also have that posted on the web in the event that you would like to take another look at that. So we did see as a slight drop in some communities, but overall, we maintain well with our, our cities this past year, even in the face of our pandemic. One of the most exciting updates I would like to share with you is we conducted a special project with the City of Brooklyn this past summer, and it was a cart tagging project, where we actually provided, the district provided the City of Brooklyn a grant to help pay for some consulting services and the publication of oops tags for recycling carts, education and awareness materials, and audits. So as exciting as that sounds, what we did is we had district staff along with City of Brooklyn staff and a couple of consultants, and we actually audited the recyclables within the city. So we, you know, chose a specific route, we had all the materials put on the floor, and then we categorized them. We weighed them, assigned percentages, and calculated, for example, you know, how much newspaper or cardboard is in the recycling. Additionally, we also noted how great is contamination in the recycling, because that has a direct impact on pricing that you will receive for the processing of your recyclables. So we did that as a pre-audit. We then managed to hire four, although we only had three stay with us for the summer, some temporary help, a couple of college students from environmental studies, which was nice, and a high school student, which is even more exciting, that had an interest in the environment, and they went out before the recycling carts in the dark of the morning and peeked in recycling carts, ascertained whether or not the recyclables were clean, if something that didn't belong in the recyclable cart was there. They completed what's called an oops tag, a little friendly reminder that, gosh, maybe that little, you know, that little tyke's toy shouldn't be in the recycling bin, albeit that it's plastic, and left it on the cart. So they went through eight weeks of that. The city reached out to their public to let them know this was occurring. We did have some interesting interactions with the public during that process, and then we conducted a post-audit at the conclusion of that eight-week period. Great findings, we were able through that one-on-one education at the cart level to reduce the contamination that we found in the recycling bins by 50%, very substantial. This kind of direct education is, you know, more of a, a regular type of outreach and education program in certain areas of the country. It's just kind of making its way to the Midwest, and we're hoping to encourage other communities to reach out to us for a special project to conduct this. We would also like to see these activities continue on a regular basis, because as much as you, you know, may send out your annual calendar in your community to say, hey, this is recycle week or not, that, that cur, that actual weekly cart communication has the greatest impact, so.
Elizabeth, if I could, I'd maybe just stop by, I think you were about to move on to the next item. I was just going to stop for a second, because we heard the same discussion in the Solid Waste Committee earlier, myself and Councilwoman Simon and Mike Foley, and it sounds It sounds like a very successful program. And so, I know you mentioned that you were going to reach out to other communities to see if there's an interest there, because this is a great success story as far as I'm concerned. So, has there been response from it?
There has been. What we actually did is we shared this with our, through our last virtual trash talk meeting. We had the city of Brooklyn present, and currently, the city of South Euclid is very interested in replicating this program for their residents. We are actually developing, which we'll be bringing to the board in December, a new category of grants that the district hopes to offer the communities, which would be the special project grant, because we're hoping if we could have one or two communities do this annually and then somehow find the funds to just kind of, you know, employ those cart taggers every year, because they're part-time, it's a great interaction, that eventually, we could build that education county-wide. So, we do have South Euclid currently interested. We've had some other communities express interest, but haven't actually had that one-on-one conversation, so.
Right, what a great story, and if there's any way that we can assist to continue to get that message out, I think, you know, there is a lot of young people during the summer months, and it's really for small amount of funds that you can really start this. And I know some people get concerned, you know, garbage police are out there, they're looking, you know, what else are they looking at in my garbage? But, great program, so anything we can do to help this.
Thank you, and I will keep you posted on that, so it's very effective, so. So, one of the other fun special projects that we've worked on over the summer is in conjunction with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy. And we worked with them to go into the Buckeye Woodland neighborhoods and conduct an illegal dumping audit or survey. So, we actually looked at over 14,000 parcels in that area, noted, you know, those parcels that were still owned, those were, that may have been in the city land bank, in the county land bank, and the type of illegal dumping that may have been on those particular properties. We subsequently then developed illegal dumping information that Western Reserve is going to be sharing with the Community Development Corporation there to, you know, encourage people, if you see something strange, reach out to the city Cleveland's, you know, illegal dump line, or reach out to us at the district. You know, we can come and through our Environmental Crimes Task Force, do an investigation. We then conducted a post-survey for this, which actually just concluded a few weeks ago. And it was rather interesting. We saw, which you're going to say, well, why do you say this is good? We saw an increase of the number of illegally dumped areas, but they were very increased or very decreased in size. When we did this in the spring, we had some significant, significantly sized illegal dumping sites. These almost bordered on just being litter. So, again, there's that direct relationship between education, you know, in the community, and hopefully a decrease. We are talking with Western Reserve about possibly looking at another neighborhood next year and taking it actually a step further, where we would like to see year-round engagement once that survey work has been completed in that community, engaging, you know, local interest groups to keep that conversation going, even after we're gone, after we've completed the post-survey. So, that was, again, a very interesting project that we worked on. And the Land Conservancy is also trying to deal with, you know, what can we do with all the vacant land? You know, how can we put that to better use? So, we were happy to partner with them to at least help identify some of the cleanup, and hopefully, that will allow them to act upon some of the land use options in a more efficient manner. Just an update on the Bring Your Own Bag project. We had been ready to deploy this year the legislation that the county had passed with the budget that went into effect in July. It removed our capability of actually leveling fines for those that don't participate in offering some sort of option for single-use plastic bags. So, we pivoted a bit with our education. We did hire a plastic bag specialist who is housed out of Consumer Affairs. She's a young lady who has an environmental background. So, we're very pleased to bring Anna Zerumba on board. She's working with Cheryl in Community Affairs and is redeveloping that website. So, we're trying to focus on, you know, alternatives to single-use plastic bags. What are the perils of those bags? And what does that impact on our environment, on the land, our land use, our waterways, that type of thing? So, we will be continuing that education. She is with us for about six months, and then we will see what we can do to continue all of that education. We also went out for a request for a proposal for the management of our household hazardous waste area that is at our facility in Garfield Heights. We did receive one qualified bid and a second bid, evaluated them both, and awarded the contract to Chemtron. That is a three-year contract, and they will be managing the waste that comes in from the communities. We have a hub and spoke set up, if you are not familiar. We have a great partnership with our service directors throughout the county, and they're very good at accepting that material locally, packaging it up in a safe manner, transporting it to us at our facility. And then, based on our volume, we broker that material safely through Chemtron. And that contract will be for slightly over $300,000 for the next three years. So, we will be continuing that well-loved program. We wanted to bring you up to date on some activities that we've been doing with communities here. It's, it seems to be, it always comes in waves when people need to go out for bids for solid waste services. It's a feast or famine. So, we have been assisting several communities. That's one of our mission statements, is to provide technical support for those types of activities, much like the Planning Commission. And we have been working quite a bit with the city of Cleveland for their, with their programming. We were pleased that they came to us, asked for some advice in the development of their bids, the evaluation of that process, their outreach and educational materials. And from what I understand, they're currently evaluating the bids. They did receive three, three very viable, very good bids in response for processing recyclables at the city. So, we're happy for them, and I believe it is making its way through their evaluation process, hopefully to actually have a public announcement soon. As soon as we hear from Cleveland, we will share that with you. And part of that success is tied to markets, which I'll talk about in a moment at the end here. The other communities that we're assisting, we've helped Parma Heights and are in the process of helping Rocky River as, well as Fairview Park in evaluating their solid waste bids. So, one of the good things that we have to report is that markets have improved. So, these new contracts that are going out for bid, if they include a market analysis component to them, they really can garner some better pricing. And the blended market evaluation process requires the bidder to provide their pricing by commodity along with the cost for processing. Simple kind of expenditure, plus or minus revenue equals a net number. And that is a fluctuating evaluation that is reset on an annual basis. So, in good times such as now, you could actually receive a revenue share per ton. In the event that markets may not be so favorable, it minimizes your cost that you are paying. And recycling markets, like every other market, just like your stocks, your bonds, they go up and they go down. And currently, we're sitting with some of these commodities at a 30-year high. So, cardboard, for example, is at a 30-year high, which is fabulous. And that's one of the benefits that have come out of the pandemic. I don't know if many people can say there were, have been too many benefits of the pandemic, but cardboard is one of them. And, for example, one of the things that we can share with you is the village of Sugarin Falls has employed this market share analysis. And when they reset on their contract date, which was the latter part of the summer, their current price for recycling was a net revenue of $16.55 per ton. So, at $16.55 per ton versus, you know, the, almost the $50 they were paying last year, that's a tremendous swing and windfall of a profit for them. So, we do encourage communities, if, you know, they can, to incorporate that model in their bidding. It is a bit of an administrative challenge, it's, you need to watch the market, you know. But if they've got the staff to watch that, we encourage them to do that.
Thank you, just a question more, a little bit in the weeds on cardboard. So, you know, there's a supply, we've got a lot of cardboard, but what actually, why has the demand gone up? Not because there's a plethora of supply, it's, what's the turnaround market for cardboard?
Well, it's kind of a two-prong, and it's rather interesting. I know Diana had shared the whole issue with the China Sword over the last several years. Well, nationally, we are banned from, you know, selling recyclables. Well, the Chinese have actually come into the United States and have created several paper mills. And what they are doing is they are creating a thin boxboard layer at these mills, and because it's not a recyclable and it's a product, they're able to ship that material back overseas for the remanufacturing. That's one prong of this. The other prong of it is just simply the explosion of online buying. Everything has to be in some type of package. So, that demand from the Amazons and everyone else that's shipping something is, you know, they're taking every bit of cardboard they can get from everywhere. So, we've seen not only new, we've had five new mills in the Midwest come online in the last 18 months, which is pretty amazing, so.
And the cost is not over the top to recycle cardboard opposed to like a plastic, you know, like a plastic bag is impossible, right? This is a single-source material, so it's easier and cheaper to recycle?
Cardboard is about $130 per ton right now, which is, like I said, an all-time high. Even plastics, though, because we've had two plastic companies come online in the Midwest since China Sword. So, that was kind of a wake-up call to do some domestic reinvestment, which is, to me, great. And in the Midwest, we've always been far more independent than the coast. We never did ship our things overseas, because logistically, we, the transportation would have killed us. But even the plastics are up, which is good. So, there are just some things, that plastic never holds the market price. The conventional things like steel and aluminum hold, and then you get into your fiber products. And unfortunately, plastics always is at the bottom, so. Oh, you're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from anyone? Really great report.
Well, thank you, I'll talk forever if you want me, so. I find this riveting. And anyways, and to that note, because I find it riveting, I have provided you some reading material. This is actually, came out this, just this past week from SWAN, which is the Solid Waste Association in North America, of which we are members. They're kind of our industry organization, and I guess maybe I should give these to you. It does talk about the market, so it's a really great story, so, and thank you.
Thanks again.
I have a question that's kind of, what would you be after?
Oh.
No, go ahead.
I was just, I was just going to ask about now the new found issue with these disposable masks and what that's doing for recycling. Is that something that, I guess, what's the future lie with those?
It hasn't surpassed plastic bags as a contaminant, but it is, we have tried to communicate, they are not recyclable. They need to go in the rubbish for a variety of reasons. First and foremost, just for the health aspect of it. I mean, if that's something that has been, we tell, we tell people, if you've wiped or blown your nose on it, it doesn't go in the recycling bin, and that, you know, masks kind of qualify for that, based on the proximity of your nose and your mouth. But we encourage, if you can, you know, wear, you know, washable mask. You know, if you can use a filter, the filter sits inside, so it's not in direct contact. I won't pretend to be a health expert whatsoever, but, yeah, that's, it's actually been more of a litter bane than a recycling bane, because, you know, I know it's happened to myself where I've, and I've lost my cloth mask. You know, you may leave a store, you shove it in your pocket, and as you get in the car, that falls out of your pocket, onto the, you know, and then it gets swept away into the drain. So, it's actually become more of a litter issue. So, we're trying to remind people, please, just, you know, don't.
Okay, if there is nothing, nothing further on our agenda, I don't believe there is. I'll make a motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Simon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, we stand adjourned. Thank you.